I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple additions to the agenda. I apologize about the last minute nature. Item, actually, first of all, on the bids that came in, they didn't come until 3:00, so we're going to change the motion from to acknowledge receipt of the memo. It's to acknowledge verbal report and bid tab dated August 16, 2010, from Public Works Director Fordice.
That's item 10-126?
Yes.
Fine.
Also, there is a small typo in the memo regarding the care's non-motorized path. The grant request is actually for the southern, the northern edge of the railroad right-of-way in between Maple and Harris Road. That's in the second paragraph. It's not actually in the motions, but just for clarification for folks. And then, I got an email, well, actually, there's two. The resolution for high, to support high-speed rail, which I think you sent out Friday, right? That would be item 10-27, 10-127, and that would just be a motion in support of the resolution of support for Michigan's high-speed rail application. And then, under discussion, paint the town teal, I think is what that letter is that I got.
Turn the town.
Turn the town's teal. Okay, we'll just put that in our discussion for now and talk about the outcomes on that. So, do we have any other additions to the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Rose, second, Ivy. Any additions to the agenda? Okay, so this motion as amended, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we don't have any absences tonight, under citizen comments. Todd, did you have somebody that you wanted to have do a presentation? It's not on the agenda. I thought you mentioned that last time.
Judy Thompson-Trojan from MML Pool is here, but that's part of...
So, under the motion?
Correct.
Okay. So, we, under citizen comments on agenda items, under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person, and the citizen comment period will be limited to a total of 45 minutes. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. Is there anybody here that would like to speak under citizen comments on items on the agenda? If not, we'll move on to consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, with the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve and adopt the items on the consent agenda?
Second.
Moon Morrow, second, Lil. To adopt items as submitted, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll move on to unfinished business, item 10-109. This is a 2010 community survey. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the 12th, and from manager Campbell. And, why don't we start with that, and then we'll see if we need to change the approve or amend the draft. So, do we have a motion to acknowledge receipt, and we can have some discussion on the...
So moved.
Rose, you have a second?
Second.
Second, Ivy. Okay. Mr. Campbell, you want to go over your memo?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me recall, back in July, I believe it was July 12th, city council had a work session reference, in Kirve, didn't get it back the last fall of '08 in the winter of '09. And at the time, council directed staff to want to do one every two years. I know there was discussion at that council meeting, reference that, but we had a work session on the 12th to discuss the format and the types of questions. And as you all may recall from that work session, the first, I believe it's the first 21 or 22 questions in the questionnaire is the same questions from the Cobalt survey for benchmarking purposes, but they've, since we had our '08-'09 survey, they have added some budget questions to help communities to determine their, because of, certainly because of the budget issues that we're all facing, to help folks prioritize things, help council prioritize things as well. And then, we also added, there's a couple questions, reference Oakwood Cemetery and possible expansion as a result of the ongoing Cemetery Task Force, and from the notes that we took from the comments from city council at that work session as far as questions to be modified, amended. We believe that that's what we've done. City staff has looked at this, and so the survey that you have before you, I should say, the draft survey, are from the notes from the work session. But certainly, obviously, if we've missed something, or if somebody's had additional items they'd like to see, where, this is, again, this is draft form, and we'd like to bring it before council tonight for their consideration, so we, so it can be officially adopted, so we can move forward with, I believe it's proposed, first week in October at this point for the survey to go out. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Rose.
I went through and compared this current survey with the one we did last time, and there are nine new questions in the standard format section before it gets to the city. So, we'll have some items that we won't be able to compare to the last survey, but I think all of them that were put in there were good. Question number nine, item number nine, says rate city government and your community on the following, and it's having leaders who are trustworthy and more like that, but in the results that were posted, the word "having" is not there, and it says "leaders are." So, I'd like to have the survey question be stated the same way that the results are stated to us. And so, I, what I would suggest is, instead of saying "having leaders who are trustworthy," it would say "leaders are trustworthy." And the second one, instead of "being well managed," is "well managed." And the third one, instead of "having employees who are well trained," it would say "employees are well trained." Because someone might think, yes, we should have excellent employees, and we should have, as opposed to saying whether we really are or not. Of course, I think we are. Item number 12, it talks about, a question about diversity of the people who live in a community, but the items that are there primarily relate to ethnicity. And I don't know if it should be expanded to include different types of diversity, as opposed to just ethnic, or if we should add the word "ethnic" into the title of it. Because we don't talk in there at all about economic diversity, age diversity, those items are not there, so we should change the title or change some of the elements in there, I believe. But I think, all in all, I think it's a great survey, and I look forward to seeing the results when they come back.
Well, I think that was meant to be, I mean, the other diversity is, you know, we have the age broken out in other areas, so, in the income strata, so, I don't know about the rest of council, but I, I mean, I think it's pretty understandable, because those other pieces are in other sections, so...
Just change the title to ethnic diversity, then. That covers it.
Mr. Rose?
Yeah, I think I've said this a couple hundred times, but I don't like this document, this instrument. It's too vague. I think there's important questions that can be asked that are particular to our place and time as a city. I hear why we ask questions about school, library at schools when we don't control or fund them. It's nice that they get good report cards, because I know they will, but I don't know why it's on our city document. Under three, about local fire and emergency services, it says adequate fire coverage. There's very few fires. The bulk, the vast majority of emergency calls for the fire agency is medical by a long shot, so that needs to have something in there about fire or medical. On question 14, I wonder, the parks and the recreation facilities, in my mind, two different things. People, do people use the recreation facilities, rec center, and do people use the parks? It's two different things. One costs money, one thing doesn't. You know, I'm curious as to how many people, local people, actually use their parks. I'd like to see that expanded. And then, on, under city government, these aquatic programs, we have those in two sections. I would think that's a pretty limited number of people who use the aquatics programs. Is there value to that, and is there value to having them in two locations?
Carla, could you respond to that? I think the aquatic program is a pretty significant program for the facility, so I think that's why it's broken out, but could you respond to Mr. Little's question?
Unfortunately, I don't have my copy of this.
I'm just talking about the last few questions here.
Mr. Campbell, if I recall, we, didn't we discuss this when we were reviewing this? We wanted to keep that in there because the aquatic program is, is a significant part of what, of the programs that we offer, and we were trying to get the feedback on that. I see it in, in the, under city government. Where's the other spot?
Well, there's, the questions are different. One is rate your satisfaction with them. The second one is how prior, how much priority should the city place on funding the service? And the third is if there wasn't enough funding, what would you specify as a budgetary action to support the service?
Right.
Although that's not in the...
If it wouldn't be more appropriate to just leave it in the priority statement...
Right.
As opposed to the other place, other location on page four.
The satisfaction statement or the priority statement?
I think you will, you can, you can, if it's a high priority or with people, then you know the programs are important and good. If it's a low priority, then you know there's an issue, but I just don't, there's just so many different things in here that I think we should be going looking after. Two questions on aquatics, this doesn't, space could be used for something else.
They're different questions. The one is for people that use it, are they satisfied with the classes? And the other is, is it as important to the community? So, those are...
Well, I would consider the aquatic programs part of the recreation programs and classes. That, to me, is very one and the same.
They're both the same, like, all of the things here are all the same here.
They're different. I know, but it's a different question.
I know, but it's two different questions.
I just don't, I don't know. I guess I don't see that many, that there's that big a group that use the aquatics programs, and there's other things I think we should do with this instrument.
Well, now's the time to talk about it, because we had a work session on it, and we're trying to, you know, move it forward, so if there's other things that you think we should be doing, now's the time to talk about it. Because I don't know if you want to bring it back, but, and have another work session, but I know there's some time constraints on getting this turned around, getting it for the October timeframe, right? I mean, can we bring it back to the next meeting and have another work session, or is there a time?
Yeah, I mean, it would be close, it would be a tighter timeframe, but we could, and whether it be that first or second week in, in October, but we can still make that work.
Our first meeting's not until September 13th, because Labor Day?
Right.
Well, it's up to council. We had a work session to talk about this. We can, you know, wrap it up tonight, or have another work session.
Ms. Payne? When's the FYI supposed to come out?
Comes out September, October, because that was the idea that we would...
We were waiting till after.
Right, because it goes out, it goes out October 1, and this would, this would be a way of, another way of notifying people.
Right, so I just, I guess I wouldn't want it to be too far apart from when the FYI comes out to when we actually get the survey out.
Right.
Well, I guess, Mr. Little, if you could comment to what it is that you think we need to be doing and we're not doing, since we already had a work session on it?
Well, I think I mentioned it, is that parks and recreations should be broken out from each other, because they're really two different things.
Well, they're, the recreation programs, rec center, city parks, they're all, they are all broken out.
But the parks are passive recreation. The recreation center and its programs are active recreation.
Right, but they're separate items.
Yeah.
So, what do you say?
But it's, it's not broken out. It just says, how frequently do you use parks and recreation facilities and programs?
Well, if you go to the page four, it says, think about the following services and your satisfaction, and then it breaks out aquatic, recreation, park maintenance, rec center, city parks. So, that's like, you know, and then, again, on the next page, it goes into what's the priority on funding, so I don't...
Well, I just think that question number 14 is too vague and not specific, and that's one of my problems with the whole document.
Okay, well, I think the reason we have the first, I don't know if it's the first 20, but that's our benchmark, so we use that as a comparison more, and then I think the other piece are tools for the staff to actually address their program.
I guess there's two ways of looking at this document, and one is, it's a report card, and the other is, it's a chance for feedback directly from taxpayers. And so, they're kind of two different things. So, I'm for feedback and not a report card necessarily. Thanks.
Thank you. I think we're trying to do both here. My, I mean, I thought that's why we added the second half, was we were trying to do both, but that might... Okay. So, our city clerk had a suggestion about, show me that. How frequently do you, so take out the library, the two questions for the library, and then say, how frequently do you use parks, facilities, and programs? And then, rate parks, and then, yeah, parks, parks facilities, and then, how frequently do you use the recreation facilities? So, we would actually make two questions out of 14 and 15, and then delete, or no, we just add two questions there and 15 the way it is?
No.
We'd have to do that, break it again?
Break it out.
So, that would make two more. Yeah, so we would add two questions, just breaking out the recreation facility and recreation facility for 14 and 15, and then delete the library ones.
So, it's a wash, it's not a net gain or loss in terms of question?
We modify that first section? I thought those were our benchmarks in Cobalt and Oakwood.
Right, that's my understanding. I can certainly ask, but that's my understanding as well, that those are our standard questions. But we can add, that's on the last page, if there's specific questions. And the only two right now that, that had come up during the work session, referenced Oakwood Cemetery, but we do have space to add a couple others. Or, and also, we can also add, that was one of the other items, on bottom of page five, under it says, finally, if there is not adequate funding to provide, there's that building code slash permitting, and it has a laundry list of items, we're proposing to add garbage collection, recycling, police, and fire on that. So, we can add. It's easier to add under the city government section, starting on middle of page four, and of course, five, and then part of six. I mean, I can certainly ask that question, but if, if there's something specific, we could put it also on the back, or add it to that, to the city government section.
Mr. Little, you had a comment?
Yeah, I don't know, I couldn't hear if Mr. Rose brought this up, but on the sixth, page six, the Oakwood Cemetery question, there's a typo, using other.
Got it, thank you.
So, do you want to put, how frequently do you use the rec center, and how frequently do you use the parks? As two questions on the end? Okay. There's enough room for that, and still not go past six pages?
We'll do our best.
What?
We'll do our best, yeah, I mean, we, hopefully, we can, we've got some room, so...
Okay.
And the biggest concern here is that, obviously, that word, you know, the shorter it is, the more people are going to fill it, but, yeah, we should be able to fit those in there.
Okay, any other further comments on the survey? So, we have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then, we need a motion to approve the amended draft of the community survey with changes as outlined in our discussion.
So moved.
Second?
Second, Ivy. Discussion? Mr. Morrow?
I just wanted to state again, in accordance with my previous vote on the 2010 community survey, I'll be voting no on this motion, simply because I don't think we need to do the citywide community survey as frequently. I'd like to look at another mechanism by which we send it out to people, not just those who are registered voters. And I'd also like to explore other possibilities of generating feedback and perspectives and insights from our citizens. So, again, I'll be voting no on this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just clarification, so, some of these proposed changes were, I mean, they're certainly legitimate changes, but because of the standardized part of it, if we, if they can't change the wording for some reason, I'll bring it back, if that's, but I want to make sure, on item number, page one, number three, about adding medical call, calls...
That's, it's the fourth response to emergencies, wouldn't that be under that? That's already, I think it's in there.
Okay, well, I didn't, I just, I'm just trying to, the changes that have been, I just don't want to...
I just think that there's more, somewhere needs a response to emergency medical.
And the last...
This one?
If that's adequate, if that, okay. And then, some of the, the other potential changes, having, your success for the leaders are trustworthy, instead of being managed, having these who are well-trained employees are trained. Number 12, the ethnic diverse question, is that...
Sorry?
That, so that, that's the direction, so we want to attempt to change, make those wording changes that councilman Rose suggested, is that? And if they, if they can't, is that, do you want me to bring it back?
No.
No.
Okay, all right, well, we will certainly attempt to make those minor changes and go from there, and I'll let you know one way or the other.
Further discussion on the motion to approve amended draft of the community survey? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Under new business, item 10-122, annual liability and property insurance pool renewal, this is a motion to acknowledge receipt of August 11, 2010 memo from C. Andrew Campbell, to approve or not approve the annual renewal premium, Michigan Municipal League liability and property pool for the period of September 1, 2010, through August 31, 2011, at an amount not to exceed $130,832, which is a decrease from five thou, of $5,876 from last year's premium.
Move to approve.
Moon Morrow?
Support.
Second, Rose. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I stated at the beginning of the meeting, Judy Thompson-Trojan from MML Liability and Property Pool is here to give a brief overview. I just wanted to, as is said in the, in the motion, we were pleasantly surprised, we did have a decrease, which is good, and she'll explain why, but, but we still continue to have very good claims rating, and so, and we're very pleased with, with the liability and property insurance pool. And, so again, as you see, our recommendation is to renew, and I'll turn over to Judy to kind of hit the high points.
Mr. Campbell, and thank you for your time this evening. We were very pleased to be able to offer the city of Saline a premium reduction. There were three major factors for your reduction. The first is the pool negotiated some really good reinsurance renewal terms, and the lower, this allowed us to provide lower rates for all members. The second is the city has had excellent experience, and so you have a really good experience modifier. The pool does, it does provide an experience rating basis on, on your premium, so your good experience has paid off. And the third is that you have two less vehicles. With two less vehicles, it brings your premium down as well. The, the pool is now also offering two additional enhancements to your renewal this year. One is that we brought your property deductible down $5 occurrence to $250 per occurrence. And the second, which is a really big adjustment that we've, we've added for all members, is that instead of providing defense if you ever have any litigated cases as part of your $5 million limit, it is now in addition to, so it actually gives you more coverage. The benefit pool membership, there's no profit motive, all the surplus is retained so that we can provide members premium stability and coverage enhancements, and then we give this to all pool members. The MML insurance are administered by the Michigan Municipal League. We communicate with our members so that you are aware on claims and, and the tools from loss control that we provide, which include the Risk Management is Good Management Program, the Law Enforcement Risk Control Manual, the Law Enforcement Action Forum, which we provide quarterly newsletters on a variety of topics such as use of tasers, Freedom of Information Act, whistleblowers, information. Each quarter, there's a new topic. We also provide Online Safety and Health Resource Manual. We also provide tip sheets on a variety of, so gateboard parks, sled hills, different that might be of interest. We also have a video training library, which is free to all members. You can borrow our tapes and train your employees. We also have sessions, and the MML offers training, and if it's a risk management, the MML pool underwrites a great part of that adminis, that fee to attend, and so, members can come for a greatly reduced rate. We're also top event on insurance, I'm going to be one of the speakers, so. And then, you're also, board members are your peers. The board is Richard Mack, who's on the council in Manistee, Penny Hill, who's the village manager in Calcasca, John Archikowski, city manager in Iron River, Jason Epler, the city manager in Ionia, Mike Kerman, city manager in Albion, Lester Hoagland, mayor in Zeeland, Michelle Heine, mayor in Williamston, Richard Root, mayor in Kentwood, and Dan Gilmartin, who's the executive director and CEO at the Michigan Municipal League. We also provide all of the members consulting services. For example, if you have a contract that has insurance terminology required in it, and you want our input to just review the contract, and since we do that for all of our members, and that's a courtesy, we can answer any additional questions that you might have that are insurance-related, so just use our services, that's what they are, and we appreciate your membership in the pool. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thanks a lot for updating us, appreciate it. And thanks for lowering, actually, I should say thank you to staff and city management for keeping our risk factor low. Okay, so, any other discussion about this motion? Not, we have a motion to approve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 10-123, a marketing plan for the Saline Rec Center, this is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the August 12, 2010 memo from C. Andrew Campbell, to authorize or not authorize the engagement of Design Hub for marketing services for the Saline Rec Center, and an estimated cost of $9,900, and to authorize or not authorize the city manager to sign the city's acceptance of the Design Hub proposal as submitted.
Moved to authorize and authorize.
Moon, second, Rose? Discussion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, if there's no further discussion, we did have a work session on it before the meeting, and, you know, I think a lot of questions that were from the council people that aren't on the task force were answered, so... and I think a lot of questions that were from the council people that aren't on the task force were answered, so. I don't know, Mr. Campbell, if you want to say anything about it?
Certainly, thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council, or actually, the mayor pointed a task force for the rec center. This is a result of the budget work sessions for the career that we're in, 2011. And as the task force met and discussed, and one of the main issues, we believe the task force had a consensus sign is that marketing is, is vital to the success of, of one of the many crowns in this city's crown, if you will. And it is a means to strengthen, strengthen that, this mark, the marketing proposal from Design Hub, obviously, local business, is to help with that effort for, for individual or family type, as well as the, the corporate or group folks. And then in overall, to develop an overall marketing plan to help promote, there was, and specifically, membership, because the membership is the lifeblood of that facility. And the, the stronger the membership funding is, is the less, as I said earlier in the work session, is the less subsidy from general fund dollars. So, if there's any other questions or comments?
Mr. Law.
I understand what Mr. Campbell said about the local aspect of the company. And I know, Mayor, you mentioned in our work session how Design Hub already has some affiliation with the city, and they're familiar with our needs, if you will. But I was curious as to whether or not the costs, and specifically, I guess, for the brochures, are compatible with any other company that may offer the same type of service. I was informed that it's pretty close. I'm, I guess that's a question that maybe cannot be answered tonight, because we, the task force already had in mind for Design Hub to carry this project forward, is that right? So there was no in-depth look at how other companies, not maybe in Celine. Granted, I'm always for local companies, but.
We didn't, we didn't really go to any other, partly because they have already done the marketing piece for the website and have worked really closely, and also did the logo. So they've already done a lot, a lot of general research. They haven't done any targeted marketing research, and that's really what we're trying to define, is where the sweet spot is on the membership, you know, how we, how we can really leverage that. So, because they already had quite a bit of familiarity, and are already working with Carla on a really regular basis regarding getting more compatibility with the new upgrade website with her software. I mean, there's just a lot of overlapping pieces already. So when we identified that, in order to accommodate, we need to find marketing services so that we could actually be more effective in, you know, bringing out what we need to be communicating to the market. We realized that Design Hub probably would be the best, because they already have a lot of knowledge already. So there, while there are costs associated, they would be less than someone that wasn't familiar with the facility at all.
The one other question I had was this marketing campaign, or if you will, study, to get 300 new members over the next 12 months. So I would assume then, a year from now or less, we'll get an idea of how successful this campaign has been? And is that true?
Great, we talked, they, we talked about trying to, that we need to be measurable, that whatever we end up doing, we need to make sure that we have an outcome.
Because I would hope, and I know, that the task force had this in mind, that we are accountable for taxpayers' dollars, and that we want to see that they are. And if they're not, then we take steps to maybe do go another route. Thank you.
Mr. Morrow.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Mayor, that I enthusiastically support this motion. And as a member of the Recreation Task Force, I found the whole process very enlightening. And I'm very happy that we can utilize a local firm in Design Hub. I'm confident that they're going to do outstanding work. And the euphemism was used twice at our work session today, that this is an investment into our rec center and into our community's future. And the rec center is obviously a jewel in our crown. And I think that this proposal, when adopted, will give the staff at the rec center the resources they need to solicit memberships, both from private individuals and groups. But it's also going to give us, I think, some really insightful feedback as to what our, our community expects from the rec center. So I, again, enthusiastically support this motion and urge its adoption. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Rhodes.
I would just like to make a comment here that might help council member Law be a little more comfortable with this. And that is that, in a non-city group that I'm involved with, four months ago, we went out with a request for a proposal to develop a website and some marketing programs. Two firms responded, Design Hub was one of them, and their proposal was 8% less than the other firms. And I think, I think Design Hub, probably, if there had been an opportunity to do an RFP here, probably would have come in lower also. Don't know that for sure.
Maybe, maybe not.
Hello? Any other comments on this motion? Mr. Ivey.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to let council know I will not be supporting this motion for a couple of reasons. I, I'm afraid, I'm a little bit unconvinced. I don't think that city staff and the task force made a compelling initiative to convince council that this is something that we need to do. And secondly, I was not convinced, having talked to Chris and, and.
Karen.
Karen from Design Hub, thank you, Pat, that, that, they haven't really convinced me that they're going to provide anything that we couldn't do on our own. And it seems to me that it's not the content and the production of the brochure that is as important as the distribution. And I think we could really focus on that more than the content and be, be better off, so. Nothing against Design Hub, I, we work with them, they're a fine group, and I have, I'm not convinced this is, that's $10,000 for, so I will not be voting in favor of the motion. Thank you.
Further discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to authorize and authorize. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Item 10-124, vending agreement with Celine Area Schools. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the August 12, 2010 memo from Parks and Recreation Director Scruggs to approve or not approve the agreement between the city of Celine and Celine Area Schools for the Young Adult Program to provide drink and snack vending at the Celine Rec Center with a 33% commission paid to the city on a monthly basis. To authorize or not authorize, the mayor and clerk to execute the agreement after review and approval by the city attorney.
Move to approve and authorize.
Second. Move, Rhodes, second ping. Ms. Scruggs, do you want to come up and talk about this?
Thank you. Been working with, and I brought with me Kevin Musson. He's in charge of the Young Adult Program. We've, we've been in discussions for over a year regarding a program where his young adults would provide vending service at the rec center. We currently are working with Northern Vending, and we've been with them for several years. And we've, over the years, we've contracted with other groups, Knights Vending and Arbor Vending and Northern Vending. And he has a group, and maybe he can talk a little bit more about his, what his group does, but where they would get some job training and make money for their program and provide a service for us. And we were, you know, collectively, we were like, well, this could be a really good situation for the entire community. And so that's why we're, we've worked to put together the request for proposal. Mr. Grossman has reviewed it and has approved it. Financial Officer Tom Wall has, has reviewed it and approved it from their end, too. So we're at this point where we're ready to move forward. But I'd like to let Kevin tell you a little bit more about the Young Adult Program and how they're going to service us.
I think a lot of you have seen us around town, I teach 18 to 26-year-old disabled young adults in Celine.
Can you come closer to the microphone?
We now have 46 students in our program. We've got three other teachers besides myself now. But a main portion of what we do is job skill training throughout our community. We've currently got over 20 sites locally in Celine. We're very fortunate to be here in this environment. But we started stocking vending for the schools a couple of years ago. And with the contract with Pepsi currently, there's not a lot of profit in it for us, there is for others. But, so we're kind of stepping away from that. We're trying to look at other ways in which we could continue this type of work, and then look for a way in which we can generate more profit for our program. We're trying to keep our vans in operation and look to purchase new vans for the program as well. So we're just trying to make our program more sustainable in the, in the community and continue job skill training like we are. So that's where we kind of came up with the idea that if ever in the future, you know, we would, we would like to take a shot at, at doing some vending for you as well. We're there every morning, some of you know that, you see us in there. We're, we're in the rec center every single morning, which will, will take our time to make sure that everything is stocked properly and, and, you know, and things are taken care of on a, on a daily basis there at the rec. So we just wanted the opportunity to, to, you know, try and ask.
Any questions, Ms. Ping?
Not really a question, I just wanted to say that I 100% wholeheartedly support this contract. And assuming that it will pass, but just congratulate you on your collaborative efforts. I think it's great when two really good programs can get together to become even stronger, you know, and benefit the community, so congratulations on your collaboration, I think it's fantastic.
Mr. Rhodes.
I'd like to also thank you for your work with the Young Adult Program. I think that's a great thing.
Thank you.
I had two questions. What happens when school's not in session with the restocking?
We're a year-round program. That was one of the changes, one of the things that we do differently than other Young Adult Programs is we're year-round. We run a program Monday through Thursday with additional courses through community education. So our students are in, you know, five days, then a week. And then during shutdown time, we've offered a stipend to one of our paraeducators, who also has a food service background, which is what we are looking for. And she's going to take on the task then of stocking any machines on the off time with some of our students.
Okay, great, and then the second question, do you anticipate that the item costs will be similar to what they currently are?
We're planning on doubling, no. No, we're, we're not changing anything, we're going to leave everything exactly the way it is. We've looked at the items, we've written everything down of what items are being sold. So we, we don't plan on changing much about that, cost would, would stay the same as of right now.
Great, thank you, Kevin.
Any further questions? Well, I would agree, I think all council feels it's a great opportunity to work together. And thank you for coming up with that, and good work. Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. CARES grant applications, we actually have three here, so we'll start with the first one. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the August 10, 2010 memo from Finance Director Burgoyne regarding CARES application for a non-motorized path from Maple Road to Harris Street. To approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution estimated authorizing City Manager Campbell to make application and sign required documentation for a CARES grant in the amount of $60,000 for a non-motorized path from Maple Road to North Harris Street in collaboration with the Celine District Library.
Move to approve and adopt.
Move, Ivy?
Support.
Second, Rhodes? Discussion? No, Mr. Burgoyne, if you want to talk about this, or Mr. Campbell? Why don't we talk about first and then answer questions?
Sure, I'll just do a quick introduction and turn over to Lee. His office has prepared the document. But we have been approached by Leslie Nehammer, who's in the audience, the executive director for the Celine District Library, on question of helping out, find, some portion of funding for a portion of a trail that they'd like to see on the, be the southerly portion of their property, just, just north of the Central Railroad area. And as we sat down and discussed, we talked, we kind of evolved into a bigger project, and talking about a partnership to connect, basically from Maple Road to North Harris, which is across the street where the current depot trail ends. So it'd be a nice piece of the overall non-motorized pathway plan of the, of the community. So we talked about, so basically, the city's part, it would go across, from Maple, across the southern edge of the library property, and then, and come into Brecken Park. And then from Brecken Park to North Harris Street. We talked about a, a partnership with Tifa dollars, it is in the Tifa District, the, the portion in the library, but not for Brecken Park, unfortunately. So we talked about partnership with the city and the library, as well as some CARES dollars, so a three-way partnership to fund this whole project. So that would be, I mean, we're excited about the, the possibility of, of the partnership. But that's, so that's where this is kind of the originated from, was this partnering concept. So with, I'll need, I'll turn over for the details to Lee.
Well, that's, that's a lot of the information. This is a $180,000 project. The library had enough for its portion. The city did not have enough in the Brecken Park area. So that's the reason that the city would be applying for the CARES. So one of the, in the CARES application, it says that they are looking for projects that they can make, come about with the CARES money, where there's some other money that's being leveraged. Well, actually, there would be $60,000 from Tifa, $60,000 from the library, and the CARES would be 60, so they would be leveraging, leveraging quite a bit. This path overlays where the Greenway is. This connects to the intercity path that the county has their overall plan. Connects to Maple, which is a bike route. So this non-motorized path fits right into our non-motorized plan. The idea would be for the library to do, get their wetland permit, and to establish their historic markings, or whatever information they would put out there as part of their $60,000. Tifa would put up $60,000, and CARES would put up $60,000. And the city would oversee the construction of the project. So the library would get the wetlands permit and do the signage. And DPW would rough prepare it as needed, like take a few trees out of the way, or whatever, and connect the project. And the city would oversee the contractor.
What is the date of the CARES?
The 26th, Thursday, the 26th, at 4 o'clock, August.
And when does the CARES Board look at this application?
They look at it during September and October, and the Board of Education provides their vote in early December. So it, it would also take some time for the wetlands permit, for the library to hire and, and someone to get the wetlands permit.
Well, I'd like to be noticed as to when the CARES meeting is, so that some of us might want to attend that. So if you could make sure that we have an opportunity to attend that to support this meeting.
Mr. Burgoyne, can you tell me, is this $60,000 currently in the Tifa budget?
There's more than that in the Tifa budget on roadside improvements, yes, ma'am.
So this is, so there was, it was undesignedated as any specific project, but designated for?
It, it was thought there would be along major routes, like Michigan Avenue or Maple. But this project had not come up. The library developed an interest in having some type of trail near the southern edge of their property. And we talked to them because we wanted to hopefully make this all part of a system, a path system.
There's no project that's going to lose out because?
Suffer, no.
Okay, all right, thank you.
No.
Mr. Low.
Just a comment that when we first dedicated that the library would go where the library is, the intention of everybody involved was that eventually this path would come in. So it's been a while, but it's still a good idea, and hopefully it'll all come together.
Yeah, it's been part of our linear master plan, for the rec master plan for 15, 20 years. And I know that now, it's part of the non-motorized plan. Mr. Morrow, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Burgoyne, as a former member of the CARES Board, I'm pretty cognizant that oftentimes grant applicants don't get the amount that they request. It's usually funded in a portion, so that was action. Does the project languish without the full $60,000, or what happens?
Probably not. Probably not. The project might be able to be done for slightly less. I would yield to Jeff on that, but I, we look at number, 180 is a fairly robust number. Maybe 100 could be done for $10,000 less or so. The other thing is that $60,000 from Tifa is not the maximum that Tifa had set aside towards the linear paths.
What's the maximum Tifa set aside?
$100,000. So, they actually could go up somewhat, but they can only spend it within the Tifa district.
Right. So, that leaves out the portion of work. Okay.
Mr. Ivy?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, in no way conflicts with the railroad property. We're not talking about any conflict there.
Right. It does not come on to the railroad property in any way. It's near the edge of the railroad property. It's on, just on the north side of the railroad property. Some of the residences that have backyards that come to the south side of the railroad property, but this doesn't cross the railroad property. It's on the Brecken Park side, so it would not conflict with any of that.
And my comment is, I think a lot of our citizens would embrace this. I think it's a very important path, and I think, I would urge citizens to contact the CARES Advisory Council and let them know that this is something that would be very beneficial for them. I know people in the neighborhood. I happen to live in the neighborhood of Brecken Park, and this path has been hoped for, for many years. So, I definitely support this motion, and I urge people who have an opportunity to go down there and look and see how this can benefit the city and how they can use this and to get from, just think, you know, we would be able to walk from Maple Road all the way to Ann Arbor, Celine Road.
And also use bicycles on the trail.
Yeah, and bicycles too. So, it's a great thing. Thank you.
We're supposedly getting a letter of support from the schools on safe routes to schools.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have motion on the floor. The motion of the resolution submitting the authorize, authorizing the city manager to make application. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next motion under this item is motion to acknowledge receipt of the CARES grant application from Downtown Director Trapp for portable ice rink to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution estimated authorizing Downtown Development Trapp to make, Director Trapp to make application and sign required documentation for a CARES grant in the amount of $2,000 for portable ice rink equipment. Do you have a motion?
Move to approve and adopt.
Second.
Mr. Law, I wasn't sure you'd want to do that.
I wasn't sure either. That's probably the easiest motion I had to make.
In your life?
On this council right now.
Okay. Discussion. Mr. Trapp, or you, like, or Mr. Campbell, what's your pleasure?
Well, I'll kind of introduce it as, I was going, that's right. Council, one of the council goals and objectives is, you know, winter activities and possible ice rink, and we've been talking about this for at least a year and a half, maybe, or more, probably more, but anyway, so just to brief history without stealing too much of Mr. Trapp's under, Dexter had a, they purchased a portable ice skating area rink last winter, and it was very successful. And I know Hart has, he was up there actually the day that they were installing it to get, asked a lot of questions, and I know he's been working hard on finding other sources of funding. The city council did put that, it says in here, $2,000 towards the budget, towards purchase of it as a match, that type of thing, so CARES and some, and I'll let Hart talk about the other funding sources. But again, I think it's, again, this would be a recreational type, not a, not a, there would not be hockey, unfortunately, at this point in time, but big reason because of the lack of size. But to see, I mean, because I know years ago, there used to be ice skating and obviously the seasons and being cold enough and that type of thing is always an ongoing struggle. But we think it would be very, very well received in the community, so that, I mean, obviously, the other question to talk about is our will, is proposed locations for this. But also, one other vital point, one was, if I, if I remember correctly, one of the reasons council wanted to, again, keep it, keep it as close to downtown as possible as a draw to the downtown. So, having said that, unless there's any questions, for me, certainly turn it over to Mr. Trapp.
The proposal here is to ask CARES for $2,000 to assist in the purchase, which is our money, and then 1,700 plus or minus, depending upon how the Rotary Club did at the Celine Summer Fest. They have pledged to provide that, those profit funds to the ice rink. I've tried to show what the ice rink will look like with pictures from Dexter and how they put up their ice rink in the park in the center of town. Not only was it successful for them, and they incurred some additional expense because their ground was not level, so they incurred another $1,500 to make it work. But they have tore down the existing ice rink and are moving it to a new location and are out to buy a substantially larger ice rink for this upcoming year. So, they felt it was a really worthwhile project and something that they had made it work, and so selecting a site is one of the things that we still have left to do. I've identified six different areas that are possible. As with any site, each has positives and negatives, some more than others. Trying to put it downtown is somewhat difficult because there isn't either an area large enough or an area that has both water and electricity or just enough space to make it all work. So, I've talked with a number of the owners of the property. The only one I haven't been able to contact yet is Andy from Sun Engineering, talking about putting it on that parking lot off of Henry Street. The other site, of course, is downtown there between Cobblestone Rose and the Stone Arch Arts Building. Also, either another site is to identify, is to put it out here between the firehouse and City Hall or in the back area off of Davenport and the route out of the City Hall parking lot. The other site is, of course, Henny Field, which does provide adequate space. All of these sites require water and electricity to really make it work. If you don't have either of those two, it's very difficult because you'd have to carry it or cart it. So, still deciding, undecided on where we should put this. I do have letters of support, both from the Chamber of Commerce and from the downtown merchants, as they are in hopes that we can make this work and then have this as something that we can use for our Winter Fest as a focal point for the event that we're trying to plan for January 29th, 2011. So, any questions?
Questions for Mr. Trapp? No? Mr. Rhodes?
No, a question, just a comment. It seems like Henny Field would be an excellent location for this, and that it does have fire hydrant down there and is in process of getting electricity and has some off-street parking and also has enough space that if it was decided to do additional activities around the ice rinks, that they could be accommodated there. And then the other thing is, I know Mr. Campbell said this, but I want to make sure that our viewers understand that this is not an artificial ice rink. This is dependent upon the weather.
Yes, it is, and it is very dependent. The suggestion from the company that we're talking to is that the sooner we can get it purchased and installed and then just wait for the weather to happen. Dexter did not do that last year. They installed it sometime in December, and they lost out on about three weeks during November. So, they're going to be ready this year, but, you know, I also took from that that the sooner we can get it in, the better off we're going to be if we're going to do it.
Mr. Law?
Well, yes, it is weather-dependent, obviously, but I like to think that since we had such a hot weather summer, that we're going to have a very bitterly cold winter, so that's why I leave that. But I don't know if it's been mentioned, but Rotary deserves thanks as well for their contribution to this. They put their donations or what they made from the Summer Fest casino nights to the rink, and so it's good that there's community involvement from that aspect as well. And I know with the general upkeep of the rink, when it snows or if it snows, that there'll be people out there. Hopefully, that will be pushing the snow off. I'll be out there pushing the snow off if I have to. I'll water the thing if I have to, too. So.
Hey, I found it really interesting to go further on your comments and talking with different people around that have been in Celine for a number of years and go back to when they had the ice rinks at Henny Field and how much they enjoyed it and the number of people that would go to school and then after school would head right for the ice rink. And I understand that there was some kind of a warming shed or something that was out there that had a little fire pot underneath to keep people warm, but I thought it was very interesting that it's something that this community's had in the past, and a lot of people would like to see it have it in the future, so.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to acknowledge receipt and approve and adopt, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The final motion under this topic is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 29th, 2010 memo from Parks and Recreation Director Scruggs regarding the CARES grant request. Assist to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution estimated authorizing Parks and Recreation Director Scruggs to make application and sign required documentation for a CARES grant in the amount of $23,584 for play structure equipment for Teft Park.
Move to approve and adopt.
Move Ivy, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Law. Discussion. Mr. Campbell or Ms. Scruggs would like to talk about this. Do you want to introduce the topic, Mr. Campbell?
Well, we have, this is, obviously, as you read, Madam Mayor, thank you, the, out at Teft Park, we have an age, aging piece of equipment that has actually, over the last few years, become smaller in size because it's, certain pieces have become unsafe. We had to remove it and scale it down, if you will, and now we're at the point that we just need to remove it, and we'd like to, we're doing our best to replace it. And this is obviously current financial times. We're looking at different ways to fund that, and obviously CARES is one of those possibilities. So, I'll turn it over to Carla.
What Mr. Campbell said is correct. The play structure just north of the building is 19 years old, same age as the building itself, and over the years, in fact, just this summer, the slide that was attached to it broke, and they just don't support this type of, they don't have any replacement parts for this structure any longer. And the structure is, it's called Miracle. It's Miracle of Michigan, which is the play company, and most of our equipment around town is purchased from Miracle. And we met with the representative, and they do have a grant program also that if we were to replace this piece of equipment, we're using the same square footage, same footprint, so we don't have to add safety surface. We, you know, replace it with something very similar in size that meets all of the safety requirements. They have a, I think it's a 20%, which is a grant that they would give to us. So, basically, we would be leveraging $13,000 grant from Miracle of Michigan towards the CARES grant that would purchase the entire play structure, which would be $32,593. That's the total purchase price, which includes what we call a community build installation. Very different from the ROMP play structure.
What's it doing?
It's, but it is utilizing community volunteers, which I'm sure that we can get enough to come out and help. And they actually send one to two representatives from the company for the install, and it takes one day, and it...
It's a lot different.
It's, yeah, it's a lot different from the Leathers Corporation, but it's, the representative that I spoke with has actually done a lot of these installs. She was the, actually, the director for the City of Wayne for several years, retired just recently and is working for this company, and her community has done three or four of them, and she says they're fabulous and very easy to administer as long as we have the volunteers, so I'm sure we can do that.
So, did they tell you how many volunteers you need?
She didn't, no. It all depends on the size of the play structure. This one is actually a lot smaller than the ones that she's put in her community, so I would imagine if we got 20 to 25 people, it would be 20.
Any questions from council? Mr. Marle?
Ms. Scruggs, excuse me, essentially the same question I asked Mr. Burgoyne. Because this is a fairly large amount to be submitting to the CARES Advisory Board, can we make this project happen if only a portion of that 23-plus is allocated?
If the CARES board comes back and says, you know, we can afford a certain amount, what I would like to do is to, you know, try to seek out other donations or, you know, other grant opportunities to try to make this project happen. But the way it stands right now, the play structure is usable, but it's, and it's safe, but it does need to be replaced completely.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Rhodes?
Excuse me, is this play structure accessible for young people who have some limited mobility or something?
It's not an ADA-specific play structure. It's not designed for that, not like the one that they have at Pleasant Ridge, which is an ADA play structure. So, no, it's not.
And I participated in the installation of that one at Pleasant Ridge, and it wasn't all that difficult, and it was kind of fun when you get 20 or 30 people out there, one capable supervisor.
Right.
Any further discussion? Mr. Ivy?
In the Miracle proposal, there's two supervisors included in the two-day build for $2,000. Is that for their labor, or is there other costs involved besides their labor?
That's, that's the cost for the installation, and so it's essentially providing the supervisors for the installation, but the volunteers are the ones that are actually doing the work. They're coordinating, you know, making sure that, you know, these pieces go together and how to screw them together and how to install them and so on and so forth.
You don't feel confident that you could handle the supervision of such a effort?
Honestly, I, we did one at Curtis Park. We tried to do a community, it was actually the Park Commission that tried to install it ourselves, and we ended up having to hire the company to come and help us. It wasn't as straightforward as...
Sympathetic to the comments made by my colleague, Mr. Marle, regarding the amount of money that goes to the CARES Advisory Council, and if we could trim anything, I think it would be helpful, but you don't feel real confident about that $2,000 being eliminated?
No, I wouldn't trim that.
Okay. Thank you, Carla.
Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Carla, and I apologize, I think we discussed this, but a lot of times, in reference to the question about the supervisors, a lot of times, if they don't have somebody, a supervisor on site, they will, they will void their warranty. So, that's to make sure it's put together right, and I don't know if, I don't want to say that for sure on this one, but sometimes that will happen. If they don't have someone that's certified to help put it together, they're not going to, they're going to avoid their warranty because they don't know if it was put together properly or not.
I don't know if that's...
But yeah, I say, I don't want to mislead because I, that's, but that is, that is a possibility.
Okay, further discussion on this motion? All in favor of the motion to approve and adopt, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10126, this is Design Services for Clean Michigan Initiative Grant. As is pointed out in the agenda, we got their proposals late today, and Mr. Fordice is here to talk about the bids. We need a motion to accept a verbal report and a bid tab dated August 16th, 2010 from Public Works Director Fordice.
So, second.
Move Rhodes. Second, Marle.
I issued an RFP about a week and a half ago to solicit proposals for design services... I issued an RFP about a week and a half ago to solicit proposals for design services for the Mill Pond Park CMI Grant Project. Just to refresh your memories, the overall project includes stabilizing the shorelines near the Bowley Bridge, and stabilizing the supports of the bridge, installation of a observation pier boat dock into Mill Pond, stabilizing the banks of the Dog Park with a mixture of native plantings and some hard reinforcement of the shoreline there, and installation of a rain garden near the parking lot, and also a pathway extending from the parking lot south through the park, around the Dog Park, and to the toe of the slope where there's an existing fairly rustic trail down from the hospital campus. So, that's the scope of the project. We received three proposals to design those elements and prepare construction documents. You have the bid tab in front of you. All three companies submitted very nice, comprehensive proposals, and they all adequately addressed the items in the RFP, but Midwestern Consulting, as you can see in the bid tab, was roughly $4,000 less expensive than the number-two bid, and almost seven, you know, six and a half thousand less than the high bid. And we have worked with Midwestern on a number of projects in the past, some street projects primarily, but they also designed some detention structures for us, and bridge head walls, or storm outfall head walls. And they showed in their proposal what I thought was adequate past history with other communities and other entities doing similar non-motorized pathway and shoreline stabilization-type projects. So, recommending award to Midwestern Consulting.
Questions for Mr. Fordice? Mr. Little?
Has any consideration been given as part of this project to move the Dog Park? The reason I ask is I receive comments from people who utilize the Dog Park, that they don't like the location. Too far to walk. I think it mostly's come in after inclement weather, and they slosh through the park, but is there any thought to that?
That is not part of the scope, and it was not part of the grant application. So, if we were going to do that, we'd have to identify additional funds to move that fence.
Mr. Rose?
If you could refresh my memory, is this a grant that we have already received?
This is a grant we've already received. The total project budget is $105,000, and I don't have in my notes how much of that is grant, but I think that's roughly 75% grant funds.
And is, is the design cost included in that $105, or is it an addition to?
Design cost, yes, they were, they were part of the project budget. These costs are, I was expecting design fees in the 20% to 25% of the project cost. This comes out to about 27%, so slightly higher. As I've been going through the project and working on the conceptual designs and doing some research on various materials, I've been trying to keep a list of items and ways we can reduce construction costs as we go along, and there's a fair amount in the, in the grant, in the grant application of in-kind labor work that the DPW would do on the project, and there's a lot of volunteer labor in there also. So, we might expand some of those a little bit to get a few more things built within the budget.
And the pathway is going to be of what material?
In the, the cost estimate that we prepared for the grant application, the pathway was six-foot-wide asphalt. In the RFP, I asked for alternates for 10-foot-wide asphalt, because our non-motorized plan was done after this application, and suggested 10-foot-wide pathways through outside right-of-way areas. So, we'll have an alternate for that, and I think that's the most likely. I have done a little bit of research on some other materials that might work, but they're not quite as smooth.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Law?
I'm just, not to get too involved with the particulars of the project, since we're just dealing with the design aspect, but just one question, because I remember we discussed this some time ago, and it was about the observation deck. How, are we talking about the, similar to the one that is at Curtis Park? Or is it something that is less, I don't know, not as large?
Definitely not as large. I'm, the, kind of, the aesthetic concept is more of a small lakeshore boat dock, rather than a, you know, it's like a, certainly smaller than the Curtis Park. Something kind of low, you know, low to the water, not particularly large, maybe just like a small L shape or a T shape.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine, thanks.
Just want to say I'm glad to see we're finally moving forward with this. I know that the Environmental Commission, along with the Parks Commission, had a joint meeting with us, discussing all of this about two years ago, and each commission has pledged significant hours for volunteering, so that, that each committee would help with plantings and that sort of thing, too, to help bring the cost down, so that we could do these improvements in the park, so... Thanks.
Any further questions? Okay, so, we have a motion to now to report in the bid tab. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then we have a motion to award, we're not award the design service contract to Midwestern Consulting in the amount of $28,509.33 for design services for the Clean Michigan Initiative Grant at Mill Pond Park for shore stabilization, pathway to the Dog Park, and an observation deck along the water. To authorize or not authorize, the mayor clerked to execute the contract documents after review and approval by the city attorney.
Move to award and authorize.
Second. Move Ivy, second Ping. Is there any further discussion on this motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10-127, this is a resolution that was forwarded to me by some people that are in, well, actually, our congressman had brought it up, but also the Watts Group, and there's quite a bunch of different groups that are involved with alternatives to transfer to road, to road system. It's just a resolution of support for Michigan's high-speed rail application, and we would need a motion in support of this resolution, that we would then forward on to, I think our congressman, I'm trying to remember where it goes.
Congressman, senators?
I can't remember, to be honest with you. It's in the email that, it should be in the email, but I can find out. But, basically, I know our congressman's very active. He's on the...
Transportation.
Well, he's on the Railroad Committee Subcommittee. So, I know he's pretty involved with it, and then I know there's some local people that are really involved with it, too.
So, I'm sorry, mayor, you need a motion?
We need a motion to support the resolution of support for Michigan's high-speed rail application.
So moved.
Second. Marl, second Ping, are there discussion, are there questions on this? Mr. Law?
No questions, just discussion. Is that okay? Okay. I support the concept, obviously, of the high-speed rail and its application, and the merits behind it. However, I do not, obviously, agree with the funding source of it, which is the stimulus funds, so I will not be supporting it.
Is there any further discussion? Would like to point out that it won't happen without some non-recurring funding. This is a very significant investment in a change in the way we do business in our transportation system. And to be honest with you, as I mentioned before, our state hasn't really made a very strong commitment to our transportation system. So, while I highly support this resolution, I'm rather cynical about how productive it's going to be. I've heard different things, because Michigan doesn't really fund, fully fund our systems as they currently stand, so... But, certainly, doesn't mean that we don't support the concept, so anyhow. Is there other questions about it?
No.
So, all in favor of the motion to support the resolution of support, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. And we will be moving into closed session. We need a motion to convene into closed session for the purpose of discussing the purchase of real estate. The council will reconvene at the conclusion of the closed session.
So moved. Second.
Move Road, second Ivy, we need a roll call vote. Councilmember Ivy?
Yes.
Councilmember Law?
Yes.
Councilmember Little?
Yes.
Councilmember Ping?
Yes.
Councilmember Marl?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Road?
Yes.
Mayor Driscoll?
Yes.
We are convening closed session at 8:54. Under discussion, commission committee reports from council members. Ms. Ping?
The Environmental Commission had its second storm drain marking event this past Saturday, and we had great volunteer turnout, able to mark several neighborhoods, the drains, either from two years ago had come off, or found new ones to put on, and then put the little door hangers on the surrounding houses on both sides of the street. So, it was just basically an awareness campaign to let people know.
What efforts did you do?
So, there was Rolling Meadows, Old Creek area, and then Crestwood area. So, it was basically just to let people know that the things that go down the storm drain go directly to the storm, or to the river. There's no filtering, so even when people wash their cars, you know, that soapy water goes right into our stream. So, it was basically an awareness campaign, and it was really well-attended.
Great. Mr. Low?
Well, I don't have a report, I just have a discussion, I don't...
Okay. Any other committee reports, Mr. Low?
Well, just the Winterfest. Our group met again last Thursday, and again, just went over some ideas about some of the activities that we can plan, or can be planned for the day, and continuing to meet on a monthly basis, again, January 29th, 2011. I'll keep putting that date out until everyone memorizes it, so...
The BDA met last week, and...
I should mention this, sorry.
I don't know, they talked about a bunch of different things, but one of the, I think one of the interesting things that is our initiative is, we're going to try to get, you know how we did those tree lighting thing that was sponsored? So, we're going to try to get sponsors for the hanging baskets, and we've identified the cost per sponsorship of $200 for a hanging basket, and that's a fully flowered, you know, fully with flowers and everything in it, because that basket costs money, and then there's additional costs, obviously, for the flowers, and then, I think there were 64, is it 64 baskets that are needed? So, it's about $12,000. We have identified some prospective cheerpeople, but of course, anybody that's interested in sponsoring one of those beautiful hanging baskets, that we're trying to transition more into that, and, because the flower boxes that we've had over the years, are, they're really starting to deteriorate and fall apart, so... And, you know, we talked a little bit about the Main Street Program, and some of the classes, you know, I don't know, and we talked about the ice rink. Sorry, anything else that...
The pavilion, mortar used pavilion?
We talked about it. We didn't really get through it. Well, that's not true. We're, we're working on trying to figure out a way to do a bid process for a design, so we can actually have it signed, so that if we want to recruit, you know, do fundraising and recruit grant money and stuff, we actually have a design that's based in reality and not in theory, which is what we have right now, so... Any, are there any other commissioner committee reports? Mr. Rose?
Just a question, because I had to leave that BDA meeting early. What kind of recognition are we going to be able to provide to sponsors of those flower baskets?
As to be determined.
Okay.
That's really up to the committee, so... Are there any reports or other announcements? Okay, Turn the Town Tea Hall, check out last night. This is for National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. There's a resident in the community that would like to have Celine participate in this, and I just wanted to make you aware of that, that this is what we're looking at possibly doing. They're asking, obviously, for, this is support of the mayor's, but I also, you know, obviously, council should know about this, and then they say in here they're going to be doing lawn signs, and that would not be something that we would be able to approve, but possibly we could do window signs and then the ribbons. So, I just wanted to let you know that this is something that they're looking towards doing in our community. So, is anybody have questions about that? It's a whole month of September, so I think she's going to get a packet or something about about it. Mr. Little, you had something to add to this question?
Yeah, when we have foreign flags at the four corners, who puts those up?
We do, DPW.
DPW? I, I recall that when we had the French flags up, they were hanging in disarray and so on, so I'd like to make sure that those get monitored routinely. Okay.
Any other discussion items? Now, we need a motion, actually, public comments. Any, for me to act, any citizens may come forward at this time and make comment or question to the city council. The public comment here will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone would like to speak, it's requested, but not required, say his or her name and address for the record. If two folks in the audience, would either of you like to speak? Okay. Is there any other business to come before the city council? If not, our next meeting is September 13th, because of the holiday, at 7:30, and we need a motion to adjourn at 9:12.
So moved. Second.
Move Marl, second Ivy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is now adjourned.